Can we all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Just maybe not.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome to the August 16th, 2021 Board of Alderman Meeting. First up, we have the meeting minutes from the previous meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Are there any changes, corrections, grammar in the minutes that people would like looked at? Hearing and seeing none, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are on to outside the rail. First up, I have Joshua and Anna Macduff, I hope I pronounced that right, retail cannabis in the city of Rutland. And if you would just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Josh Macduff.
And I am Anna Macduff.
So we actually just wanted to come in front of you and thank you all for your time to get an idea of what the process is to get the vote on Town Meeting Day for retail cannabis in the city of Rutland. My wife and I are the founders of Mountain Girl Cannabis, and we're looking at, you know, where we want to do business and start our operation, retail cannabis operation, and, you know, we see a lot of opportunity here in Rutland and want to open some doors, ideally, in the city.
Thank you. Attorney Blumer is the expert. What would you advise?
I think a referral to one of the committees, it's not necessarily, doesn't necessarily require charter and ordinance, but it may end up there at some point, so you could look at it as community and economic development, you could look at it as charter and ordinance General Committee.
Okay. So before we, do we have an ordinance currently that disallows retail in the city of Rutland?
I can't recall, I can't recall if it was an ordinance or if it was just a resolution of the board, basically saying that they, that you wouldn't approve of a, of such an establishment. I believe it was maybe four or five years ago when the idea first came about, but I don't remember if it made it to ordinance status or whether it was just a decision of the board at that time.
Okay. So, I mean, if I may, I've been on the board for like 14 or 15 years now, and I do recall us having this discussion as far as that went. State legislature had passed something a few years back which allowed the towns to either accept a retail cannabis or to reject it and say, you know, it's not allowed within the city limits. We did do something, as the city attorney was saying, I know we took action on that which denied the ability to open a retail cannabis in the city. I just don't know if it was a policy of a former board along with the mayor at the time, or if it was put into a city ordinance. So, and we're talking, well, as he said, like four or five years ago.
I believe it was at the directive. So I could be wrong, but I believe at each town meeting cycle, the towns, you know, have the option to put it on the ballot with the passing of S-164, which is kind of new. It wouldn't have been something that occurred 12, 14, even four years ago. So last year was the first cycle where that happened. Once they legalized within the state, once they legalized within the states, a handful of towns had voted on it, Rutland not being one of them. So just curious what the process is to get that on, on the vote for the next town meeting cycle.
Process would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, would be go out and get signatures door to door type of thing on a petition.
Okay.
Six hundred, I believe you need to, to have it valid for the, for the, you turn that into the city clerk, and then he, you know, he would check the signatures, make sure they're all valid voters, and then put it on the, and then you have every right to have it on the ballot at that point.
Yeah, that would be great, because part of the legislation said that if towns don't opt in by a time, and I don't recall if it's 2023, it automatically means that the town is opted in. I don't know how that relates to the previous.
To the previous action that the board took, and that may be something that the city attorney can research for us and you, and I'll let you know.
So what we can do to start is get the signatures, is that something that?
Yeah, and this is Henry Heck in the green shirt. He's a city clerk, and his office is downstairs. You can go down there and you can get petition, at least a petition form.
Sure.
It shows you how to do it, and then you have to have the correct wording at the top, and maybe working with the city attorney could accomplish that.
Alderman Clifford?
I'd like to refer it to charter and ordinance.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to refer, and it has been seconded, to charter and ordinance. Any discussion or debate on that? Sigh your hands. Good, good. Attorney Blumer?
If I may, and I could do this research before the meeting gets scheduled, but I'll check to see whether if the board, if the board's desire was to put it on themselves, whether that's possible or whether it requires the petition. The petition is a way that if the board is not interested, in a normal case, I'll have to look more closely at the statute, but the petition would be if the board says, no, we don't want to put it on in our own volition, it's a way for the citizenry to add it to the ballot. So I'll check before the meeting is scheduled if it, if it gets referred, so that we kind of have the lay of the land, and the board will know whether they could make the decision themselves or whether it's, it's got to be the citizen petition.
And just one last question, is there, is there any way to kind of get that out of sequence with Town Meeting Day, or it really happens, gets on the boat at only that point in time for 2022?
You're saying prior to Town Meeting, or?
Yeah, and the reason why I ask is because they're, they're opening applications for retail licenses of September of next year, and we obviously want to know, you know, where we're going to conduct our business. Part of our business plan in the application process is to have locations vetted and in mind, and, you know, we want to make sure we're, we're ahead of the game. I know it sounds like March to September is a lot of time, but things move really fast in the industry, and yeah.
I think in this cycle, unfortunately, because they, correct me if I'm wrong, clerk, but I don't think there's, there are any primary elections in between, so the, the cost of a special election for just one question is pretty prohibitive, so I think this year, unless, unless I'm, got my years mixed up, it would likely have to be the Town Meeting that would be the most cost effective to put the question on.
Okay, so the next citywide vote in March of next year, that's the soonest one you would have the opportunity.
Respectfully, for all board members, I thought that zoning administrator Schmitzky
had sent out some information on this. I know I received it, I'm not sure if it got passed along, I'll have to look, but it was on this exact article, I think you mentioned Act 163, 165?
164.
164. So it's a mandate Alderman deployed coming through the legislature back in the heyday, when we're here, a dispensary ordinance, I think, was established here in the city. No dispensaries were allowed within the city limits. This is a kind of completely different animal. If we don't act on it, if every municipality, town or city, doesn't act on it, there are certain criteria that will fall into place. I think the legalization, whether it's manufacturing, growing, distributing, within the town or city limits, will be happening around October of 2022. So I know when Andrew and I got together, discussed it just a little bit, he had written up a pretty lengthy explanation of it, and again, I apologize if I didn't forward it on, but I thought that was distributed to the board, but it is something that you, I think, would need to be discussed anyways. Charter and ordinance is probably great, that information will come out, but this is, this is an entirely different thing. We're kind of looking at Colorado legalization, growing, distributing, completely different animal than the dispensary law policy ordinance that was established, I think, six years ago. It's under the Loris administration when that happened, but that, this new one here is completely different in regards to what they're talking about.
What's the timeframe, Henry, of your information that you're saying, you're talking about that you?
So if it is correct by?
That it lasts a year or something that you?
Yeah, if it's by October of 22, then there is no question, we have plenty of time to get it on the March 22 ballot, for the city to make a determination of how it wants to handle that legislation that's coming down from Montpelier. And again, I think the state is allowing every town or city to make a determination of how they want to handle that specific criteria that has been passed already. It's just a matter of that law taking effect.
Can, if I may, can you research and find that information for us and get it distributed? Because I don't recall seeing anything.
And again, my apologies, like I stated, that the zoning administrator had written up a lengthy explanation of how that was going to work, and I, I'll be happy when I get back down tonight to look that up and forward that all along to the board members.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Alderman, Mary?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that Section 3660 from 2012 in our charter says that dispensaries under 18 VSA Chapter 86 are prohibitive, which I think we're referencing the medical dispensary law at the time, which has since been changed with the reference he was talking about. So I think it probably can be changed, but it still should probably be shored up in charter and ordinance, but thank you for bringing this to us. I mean, I'm excited about it, I think it's certainly something we should explore as an economic development driver, and I know out West it's been crazy successful, so it only makes sense that would happen here.
Joshua, if I find that email, I'll include you and forward you along, because I believe I have notification from you folks when you had sent me information and stuff.
Absolutely.
So I can pass that ahead of time, just to make sure we're on the same page.
Great, thank you.
Alderman Talbot?
I'll wait till this motion's voted on.
Alderman Davis?
Just a question, if I may, Henry, so a vote, if I'm understanding you correctly, a vote, a vote has to happen, and the city has to actually vote to opt in or opt out, or they're automatically opted in?
I believe that is correct.
Thank you.
It's, it's quite a while after the legalization opens in October of 22, but at some point in 23, it would automatically opt in.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further questions or comments, we have a motion, it's been seconded, to refer this issue to charter and ordinance. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Talbot?
So I wonder if we might also want to refer this to community and economic development. If there's the prospect of this being on the ballot, should there be an opportunity to learn what it could mean for the community and economy?
And I would, I would be loved to, I would love to contribute to that. I've already spoken with a lot of the local city nonprofits, ones that I feel could potentially be impacted, like the Mentor Connector, and, you know, Rutland Homeless Prevention, and some of those, the directors of those organizations, and, you know, one of the, one of the big things that we, we really want to do is to promote safe cannabis consumption, education on the process, and certainly work with the community to, you know, find a system that, that is responsible for all parties involved and the members of the city, so in any way that I can help, I'd love to.
So I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion, it's been seconded, and this is to refer this matter in the discussion of how, if approved, it would impact, potentially impact the community. Any questions, comments, discussion?
Question?
Yes.
Should we do a joint meeting so we save some time?
I am not opposed to this.
Unattended. If I may? I just be twice as long, but.
I, I, you might want to ask the city attorney, but I don't believe an issue can be in two committees at the same time, the same issue.
Yeah, I think.
One has to deal with it, it's got a, it's got a, it's a linear progression and not a cumulative progression, so.
It's not the same issue, I just want to learn about the sort of economic benefits.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say chamber, or charter and ordinance, just talk about the economic benefits, if it's something that charter and ordinance wants to, you know, use as part of the discussion, to either put it in the charter or put it into an ordinance or send it on to the voters, that sort of thing. It can certainly be accomplished there.
Then I'll withdraw my motion.
All right, motion withdrawn. Any further questions, comments for Joshua and Anna? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
And we'll have Alderman Gillum reach out to you when he schedules.
I just gave him my information.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, thanks.
All right, that takes us next to Josh Diamond, Assistant Attorney General, opiate lawsuit briefing request. Attorney Diamond?
Yeah, and so, good evening, and I'm not Josh Diamond, but I was going to introduce him to everyone. He has been here previously, about a year ago, gave the board a briefing on the opiate lawsuit. Our office, my office, has been in contact with him over the last year. There is a settlement that has been accomplished by the AG's office, and we've asked the attorney, Assistant Attorney General to come down and explain that briefly to the board, and then there is a request coming also of the Board of Alderman, so Josh, if you could.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Good evening, members of the Board of Alderman. I'm Joshua Diamond, I'm Deputy Attorney General, and I've come here tonight to discuss the outlines of a settlement that has been reached against the distributors of various opioids and J&amp;J Janson. J&amp;J stands for Johnson &amp; Johnson, Janson being a wholly owned or subsidiary of that company. What I won't be briefing on tonight is with regards to the Purdue litigation and the litigation against the Sacklers. That case is ongoing, it's in bankruptcy court right now, we are in the midst of approximately more than 10 days of hearings on that case. So this is just with regards to the three major distributors, McKesson, Cardinal, and AmerisourceBergen and J&amp;J, as I said. By way of background, the Attorney General's office has been in active investigation and in litigation in, against those corporate entities that we believe are responsible for the opioid crisis. We have sued Purdue, the Sacklers, who own Purdue, which, as I said, was part of the bankruptcy proceeding, but also McKesson and Cardinal, who are the two largest distributors here in Vermont, and there was a settlement as well that was reached with AmerisourceBergen. I'm going to give you a lot of information tonight, I welcome questions, I will hope to provide by the end of the week an executive summary of these settlement documents, which have also been provided to the mayor, and happy to come back at a later time if there are further questions. So here's the economic overview of the settlement. With the distributors, it's a $21 billion nationwide settlement. That includes the states and over 30, excuse me, over 3,000 other jurisdictions who have sued to get recoveries for this opioid crisis. Of that $21 billion, about $1.67 billion will be going towards attorney's fees. That leaves about $19 billion left, and of that, there will be further offsets for the tribes who have also brought litigation, and it's possible there may be further offsets for claims by Medicaid. There have been a lot of Medicaid dollars that have been used to abate the crisis here in Vermont, it's often used for MAT programs. The J&amp;J settlement is $5 billion, and after attorney's fees and other offsets, that will leave about $4.2 billion to be put towards abatement and remediating the opioid crisis. The distributor's settlement will be paid out over 18 years, and the J&amp;J settlement will be paid out over nine years, although, as I will discuss with you in a moment, we can consolidate the first four years' payments and get that money upfront, and then the next payment would start with year five. The allocation of these settlements will be in basically three different buckets. There will be a bucket for the localities, the cities and towns, so even though you didn't sue, you will be entitled to a portion of that, just as if you had sued. Another portion will go to the state, essentially to its general fund, but in both cases, both for the city and for the state, that money has to be used to remediate the opioid crisis. It cannot be used for roads and bridges and things of that nature. And then 70% of that money will go to what's called an abatement fund, and the general mechanics of that will be that there will be a designated state agency that will, let's say, for illustration purposes, put in an invoice to the administrator of this fund to get monies for pre-approved purposes, which are pretty broad, and I'll go through some of those with you a little bit later. And there will be an advisory committee that will recommend to the state agency, who's making that, those dollar requests, about how to use it. And the makeup of that advisory board, and this is important, will not just be state officials, but it will be local officials as well, so that there will be a voice for the cities and towns, to the extent that they've got programs they want to put some money towards, that may be an option for you all. So, these are just projections, but if, if the money comes in as we think it will, it'll be about $53 million from the distributors to the state, including the localities, over 18 years, and another $12.2 million coming to the state, including the localities, over nine years. So how do we maximize that money? So what the industry is getting, what the distributors are getting, what J&amp;J is getting, is global peace out of this deal. And so they've structured this settlement so that there are what's called base payments and bonus payments. And the way to get the bonus portion of the payments is for those litigating localities and states to sign off to give releases, for those municipalities such as yourself, who are greater than 10,000 people, to sign the release. And as well, a promise to pay a little bit more, it's called bonus D, provided no one files suit about five or six years later on. So we are going to have an ask of you all, in order to maximize the payments and help ensure that this settlement gets done, that by January 2nd, I believe, that you all accept this settlement and release your claims so that we can maximize payments. If not, we put at risk that, the bonus section. So let me just dive a little deeper, but before I do that, I've thrown out a lot of information to you all. Are there questions so far on the general structure of this settlement?
Alderman deployed?
So, Mr. Diamond, 20 years ago, I was on the Health and Welfare Committee in the state legislature when the tobacco funds came in, about 25 million, give or take, depending on the year, coming in for several years. The same thing was requested of any litigants in the future, that they withhold any claims. Have we even signed on to the initial lawsuit as a municipality, or we're just being asked to drop any claims in the future against J&amp;J or the distributors?
As far as I know, but subject to confirmation from your city attorney, I'm not aware that you have filed a complaint against any of the players here.
So this was a state lawsuit against, or we're like a party to the national lawsuit? How is that working?
So because of the focus of this lawsuit and investigations included over 3,000 municipalities across the country, the structure of this settlement was such, unlike tobacco, that a certain portion would be earmarked for the localities. And as I think I talked to you all maybe a year or two ago, there was an opportunity discussed about how to participate even if you did not file the lawsuit, and this is the fruits of that, essentially, at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, let me dive a little bit deeper. So the structure of the base and bonus relationship changes if you're talking about the distributors versus J&amp;J, although they're very similar. With the distributors, you have a base payment of 55%, so in each year, 55% of the monies are going to come through just if the state of Vermont signs off, and we've got to make a decision on that in the next couple of weeks, and by all indications, the state intends to sign off on this settlement. And then there is about 45% left in the bonus structure. Now, if we can get, as I discussed earlier, the litigating towns, which are Sharon, Bratterboro, Bennington, and St. Albans, and then all the other communities over 10,000, and I'm, I'm not going to get all of these right, but there are a bunch of Chittenden County towns, Rutland, Bratterboro would count in both categories, so I believe with Bennington, and maybe St. Albans, but I'm not sure about that, then we can maximize that 40% of the remaining 45%. And then the 5% that remains will come in after year six, provided that nobody else has filed a lawsuit going forward. Now, if you're a town under 10,000, and you want to get a piece of this, you can, you have to sign a release and a settlement, and if you don't, their portion will go back into the abatement fund, that can be used for the benefit of everybody. Similar setup with J&amp;J, in that there is a base and a bonus, but the percentages are a little bit differently. This one has a 45% base with a remaining 55% broken down, with a 5% for those later on, if they don't sue, and then 40, excuse me, 50% if we can get the same group of folks signing off and getting the releases afterwards. It should be noted that the counties are also listed as those who need to sign off as localities. Vermont is somewhat unique, with a couple of other states, we've got counties, but there really, other than the courts, there's no organizational structure, so we are talking to the side judges about working that out with them as well. Let me talk about some of the approved purposes, and then I will go back and talk about the timetable, but some of the, yes?
Josh, if I could just ask you a quick question, is it an all or nothing proposition on the localities, that if, if there's one holdout, the 40% is not unlocked, or is it pro rata, to who signs?
It's, it's not all or nothing.
Okay.
There is, if you don't get all of it, that's bonus A, then you're slipping into bonus B and C. One deals with the litigating municipalities, and then the other is those greater than 10,000.
Okay.
And, and so, and I can get into the weeds in a briefing memo with you on that.
Sure, yeah.
And for the benefit of everybody, but it gets into complicated formulas, and that's why we're asking all the towns litigating and those over 10,000 just to sign off, and let's maximize it.
And is the release, are you allowed to make the release contingent on receiving the bonus, well, I don't know if it's bonus A or bonus B, are you allowed to sort of say, if we can get the 40%, we're in, but if we, and we'll sign the release, but if it's the other, if there's a holdout, we don't like the deal for the other bonus pools?
No, unfortunately, it's, it's pretty precise language in the release, as you can imagine, it was negotiated over thousands of different parties.
Yep.
And that's, that's not an option.
Okay, thank you.
So, these are the types of abatement purposes, very broad, but MAT treatment, naloxone for overdoses, treatment for those who have opioid use disorder, treatment for mothers and infants with neonatal abstinence syndrome, recovery services, prevention programs, expanding syringe service programs, addressing the needs of persons with opioid use disorder or co-occurring conditions who are at risk, those who might be transitioning out of the corrections system or the criminal justice system, support for first responders, related training, research, education, things of that nature. There are also very important injunctive relief terms as well. So for the distributors, they're going to have to set up an independent clearinghouse, where there's really data that everyone can see about where the sales and where the opioids are going, so that there's an opportunity to intervene, so that if one distributor is sending a lot of drugs to a set of pharmacies, the other will have awareness of that, so that you don't perpetuate this overproduction and wholesaling of drugs that are so dangerous to our communities. It will require the distributors to set up data-driven systems to detect suspicious opioid orders, terminate shipments when those red flags come up, prohibit sales staff from influencing the decisions related to identifying those suspicious orders, and require senior corporate executives to provide oversight to these programs, so that we don't end up with the same problem three, five years down the line. And the obligations that I just laid out are required for about a decade. J&amp;J being different, because they're a manufacturer, not a distributor, has different injunctive relief. They are going to be required not to manufacture or sell any opioids going forward, they will be prohibited from promoting any opioid or opioid product, and it will not be permitted to promote the treatment of pain medications except for non-opioids like Tylenol and Motrin. So that is the overview of the settlement terms, and again, the timetable for this is, it's a bit of a give and take. So the manufacturer, J&amp;J, and the distributors want to make sure that there are enough folks who are signing on before they are fully committed to this settlement. So in two stages, first, on or about, I think, August 21st, the states will have to indicate whether they want to settle, and if there's a critical mass, then the distributors and J&amp;J will say, okay, we want to go forward and see how many localities. The deadline for the localities is the 2nd of January, and once again, the And once again, the defendants or the distributors and J&amp;J will see if there are enough folks who have said, yes, we will go forward, and then they will fully commit to the settlement, and those processes go forward. If all goes right, I believe the first payment from the distributors should arrive in April of 2021. And then thereafter, I believe in July is when those annual payments will kick in. And I think we're looking at also July for J&amp;J as well. But I'll get you those precise dates in the briefing memo, so you have them. And, you know, even if you all are not ready to spend the money, that doesn't mean you're going to forego it as well. So if there's planning that needs to be done, you'll have some flexibility to do that as well.
So I'll just add that everything that I've heard up to this point, I'm supportive of what the Attorney General has done in the settlement and the arrangement, and the benefits that could come from that for our community, like a lot of other communities that are struggling with the opiate addictions and everything that goes along with it. Certainly understanding that, don't expect the board just to say, okay, yeah, you know, let's do it. We do have a little bit of time, but I would encourage the board to get this into a committee, have a meeting, get the particulars, you know, as much as we can through the Attorney General's office and through our city attorney's office, and get a decision so that we can move forward on that. So that's, I think, would be my ask.
I'd like to refer it to Committee of the Whole, please.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, to refer to Committee of the Whole. Is there any discussion questions, Alderman Davis?
So, is it possible to ask a question from outside?
Let me quickly, I guess, get through the inside, and then, sure.
So my question would be, when we're, and you don't need to answer it tonight, when the Committee of the Whole meets, it'd be helpful to know, if we have some idea what kind of money would be coming to the city, and also what are the guidelines for usage? Is it, you know, what controls does it have, so we're aware of how we could spend? That would be helpful to know.
Absolutely. We'll be providing that information, I believe roughly, but don't hold me to this exact figure. It's just over 6% of that 15% bucket would be coming to the city of Rutland. And we'll be able to outline with more specificity those areas that would be approved remediation. They're pretty broad, at the end of the day. And let me just say, while the Attorney General's Office supports this settlement, I want to recognize something, that the damage done to our communities is far beyond than what these numbers provide. And we want to recognize that probably there's no dollar figure that can bring back a lost loved one and the damage to our community, but we feel that this is a start in that repair.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I guess my last thing that I would ask you is if maybe the Committee of the Whole would be chaired by the Board President, and maybe if he can get in touch with you, it would be great to have you at the committee to have a much more in-depth discussion and conversation about it, when you have more information, and then as after we've had a chance to maybe discuss a little bit amongst ourselves as well.
Be happy, either myself or someone from our staff to come down and answer further questions. Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Neri?
Could we be seeing a similar set of benefits from a Purdue settlement? Did the state of Vermont sign on to that as well?
Since that is an ongoing litigation, I'm hesitant to discuss that on the record. I'm sorry, an open session. But our public position is this, that the money that the Sacklers are putting up for the settlement is insufficient, given the damage that they've caused in perpetuating this crisis. So we are opposing the proposed bankruptcy, because really, at the end of the day, it allows the Sacklers to walk away with a substantial portion of their wealth while essentially getting the benefits of bankruptcy protection. And it's not fair, it's not fair to the damage, and it doesn't repair the damage.
Any further questions from members of the board?
I just have one.
Alderman Davis?
So, I understand the basis of the lawsuit, but how or if are physicians, PAs, those who are writing prescriptions, being educated?
And so this is a little bit out of my area of expertise, but my general understanding is that the Department of Health and the regulators of the health professionals have been very active and very aggressive, and probably since Governor Shumlin really raised this as a statewide issue back, I'm guessing, 2012, to make sure that our healthcare providers are well-educated and making responsible decisions about prescribing. And Vermont really is a leader in that regard nationally. That in providing treatment for those who are addicted through our hub and spoke process, the MAT process. So we have a lot to be proud of here in Vermont.
Yeah, and if I could answer that real quickly, there's been an ongoing council meetings, initially opioid coordination council, which I was on, now colleagues and something else, subsistence misuse. But anyway, there's an ongoing effort through two administrations to do just that, and to, you know, reach out to, you know, the health community and talk to them about, you know, and I think they have a realization, certainly by what I can see from my experience, that the dynamic has totally changed, and would you need it?
Thank you.
Any additional questions for members of the board? If not, I believe you had one question from outside the rail related to this issue?
I think things have been pretty much answered. I guess the one question would be, from all of the information that you've been given, where can we, is there like documents that we can see, you know, that say, this is what we found? Like you said, it sounds like it's a drop in the bucket, but it's helpful potentially, the settlement. So like, what are we looking at for costs going forward to address these things? And how do we plan on progressing this?
Those are great public policy questions. What I can tell you is this, at least from my office and the settlement documents, we're going to provide, and I think we already have provided, the draft term sheets, which are public records. Our executive briefing memo will be a public record. So that information will be available to all to review.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, if there are no further questions or comments, we have a motion, and it has been seconded, to refer this issue to the Committee of the Whole. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much for coming to speak with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are still under outside the rail. Do we have any other members of the public who wish to address the board on items not on the agenda? I don't believe I see anyone. I did circulate to the board earlier today. Sorry, I thought that might have been an address from outside the rail. I did circulate to the board earlier today a letter from Michelle Kaufman, 2A Griswold Drive, Rutland, Vermont. I'll read that quickly for the record. So this is, animal care and control is a vital function of local government, but it must be supported by responsible pet ownership practices. Each of us has a part to play in maintaining a safe and healthy community. For the estimated 90 million dogs and 95 million cats owned in this country, local ordinances that support responsible pet ownership can maintain public and animal safety, foster humane treatment, and reduce costs for local communities and institutions. I invite you and your colleagues to review our local ordinances to ensure that they sufficiently incorporate the following key components to support the responsible behaviors in our community. Number one, abandonment of an animal should be prohibited in all cases. Two, sterilization should be required unless owners explicitly wants to breed his/her pet. Three, identification such as licenses, microchips should be required for pets to help return lost animals to their owners. Four, roaming pets should be prohibited for the safety of the animal in our community. Responsible pet ownership reduces the financial and administrative burdens of local government and supports a safer community. I ask that our ordinances reflect and encourage these values. And again, that was from Michelle Kaufman, 2 Griswold Drive, Rutland, Vermont.
I would move to see how that says, request for ordinances reflection, but I shouldn't be chartered ordinance, so I'll throw that out there.
I'll second for debate.
So we have a motion, it's been seconded, to send a charter and ordinance. Alderman Talbot?
Yeah, so recently, when I served on a vicious dog hearing, I had some concerns about the language around what qualifies a dog as vicious. And I talked with Commissioner Sargent about those concerns, and he shared them as well. And we had talked about taking this to charter an ordinance, so it seems like this might be a time to discuss these points, along with the vicious dog points.
Thank you. Alderman Davis?
I guess my comment was, I'm not sure if the woman who has presented this has had an opportunity to even look at what's existing, at least for city ordinances. And then I think the other thing is, some of the requests are not enforceable, and we can't write an ordinance that's not enforceable. So although I may not disagree, it's just not something that we're going to be able to put into writing. So with that said, and maybe it's an opportunity to invite her to the Charter and Ordinance Committee.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we have a motion, it's been seconded, to send to Charter and Ordinance Committee our animal control ordinances. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So we are still under outside the rail. Are there any members of the committee who wish to address the board on items not on the agenda? All right, that will take us to communications from the mayor, Mayor O'Leary.
Thank you very much. The only issue I have tonight for you is what you have before you on your agenda, and that is a request to remove from the table the nomination of Mark Zetikerski for your building inspector.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to remove from the table the building inspector nomination, it has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And I've-
And a motion to circulate the ballot box.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to circulate the ballot box, it has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, Clerk Heck will be coming around with the ballot box.
I've been here.
All right, as Clerk Heck, oh, Mayor O'Leary, is that all you have?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. While Clerk Heck collects our votes, I'll look for additions and deletions to the agenda. Attorney Blumer, anything you'd like to delete?
Not tonight, not tonight, unfortunately.
So moved. Oh. Once he signs off, he signs off.
There's a few things that we can delete after execution.
All right, well, hearing no deletions from Attorney Blumer, we're on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Yes?
I believe I'm on the agenda, I'm not sure.
You are, you are up next. Perfect. All right, so we are actually moving on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Up first, we have building and zoning, requests from Brian Budrow, do I have that right?
Yep.
Perfect. For 35 Center Street, this is pages one through nine of your packet. And Brian, since you're here, if you would like to step up to the mic and speak to us, please do.
Hi, I'm Brian Budrow, property owner at 35 Center Street. Basically, I'm here to basically seek approval for a second-story balcony we're looking to put, that'll overhang the city's right-of-way on Center Street, I guess with accordance of Chapter 5, Section 4453A, so.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second. We have a motion to suspend the rules, it's been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And I'll move for the approval with the recommendation that the encroachment be treated similar to the overhanging signs.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, or questions for Brian, while we have him standing right here? Alderman DePoy?
So I see where this is from the pictures. So are you going to like put in a sliding glass door or something, so you can-
It'll be a French door up top, about 10 feet, the balcony will be to the bottom, about 10 feet up from the sidewalk.
And what's its purpose? I didn't get a chance to-
It'll be an apartment up top.
Oh, so that's gonna-
So you're gonna have coffee in the morning.
Awesome.
Sit out, look over Center Street.
Can I have a glass of milk up there? I like it.
You guys could do the marketing.
That's right. That's what I would be doing.
Very good. Any other questions? Alderman Dungeons?
Just a comment, thank you for your investment in downtown Rutland.
Sure, we're happy to do it. We love it here.
Alderman Gill.
Are you going to save the facade on the top?
We are, we're going to save the corners on the top.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we have a motion that has been seconded to approve of this request. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, best of luck.
All right, up next, we have Brennan Duffy, or maybe Barb Spalding instead, Barb Spalding of the RRA, buyout recommendation, Horizon's Early Learning Center. This is page 10 of your packet.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules, it has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And I'll move for the approval of a 10,000 buyout forgivable loan for Horizon Early Learning Center.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it has been seconded. Is there any questions, comments, debate on this? Is the applicant here potentially? They are not here, thank you. All right, would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. That brings us next to buyout forgivable loan recommendation, page 11 of your packet.
Hey, Mr. President, may I-
Alderman DePoy.
Quickly on that, I hope that people understand when they're asking this board in this city for money, that they represent themselves here in case there are any questions. I would strongly recommend it, because if this board just has an issue some night and, you know, feels like saying no, I mean, this is money that we're, you know, that's been asked of us to further economic development here, but, I mean, if we say no, and they're not here to defend their case as to why they, you know, are asking for the loan, then I just think anytime you have business in front of this board, you should be here. And I've been seeing a trend where a lot of people are just assuming we're going to rubber stamp a request that comes to us, which, okay, fine, if we rubber stamp it, then they're out of here at that moment. But if we have questions, they should be here to defend their position and why they're asking for a loan from us, so.
Thank you.
It's just my two cents on that.
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. Alderman Talbot?
I agree with Alderman DePoy, they should be here. I think maybe what happens is that they spend a lot of time working with Brennan Duffy and during the application process, and think that they've embedded through that process and don't understand the need to appear before us, or that this isn't necessarily even happening, or they're allowed to. So I think maybe that's something that we should communicate to the RRA and to Brennan, is that he should be asking these applicants to come to these meetings, if they feel comfortable and safe coming.
Hi, so Brennan did invite James and Jody to come tonight. James was exposed to COVID and didn't feel comfortable coming, and Jody's daughter is here visiting from far away, and it was our only opportunity to see her. But we do make sure they're invited to the audience meeting, and they know how important it is.
Thank you. Yeah, we're glad he's not here.
All right, well, that changed our minds.
That definitely changed our minds.
Thank you, everyone. All right, so we are still currently on the buyout forgivable loan recommendation, page 11 of your packet.
Chairman, I will be abstaining.
Alderman Davis's abstention will be noted.
And I'll move to suspend the rules on this.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, it has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And I'd just like to ask a question, if there's anyone here representing VNA that can answer any questions that might come up during this.
I can do it.
Oh, you can? You have to get over there, though.
That's okay. I've been over there before.
I do have a report that they submitted. If you have any questions, I can answer it from their report, I'm happy to do so. I'm happy to do so.
All right, thank you, Barbara. I'm sorry, we didn't vote on that yet, right?
No, we're still in a motion to recommend.
No, I'm no, did we, did I move to suspend the rules?
The rules are suspended.
We just, okay, we did, all right. So I will move to approve the loan for visiting nurses per the city's policy.
The last sentence.
Just if I may, this is forgiving, this is forgiving an existing loan. So that probably, I think we would figure it out, but it might make sense to amend it to approve the forgiveness of the existing loan rather than-
I'll approve forgiveness of the existing loan. I'm sorry, my bad.
If I may, I'm not voting, but I do know that there's a letter written that details
You make the motion.
What was done and the positions that were added that Barbara may choose to read if it's helpful to the other committee members or court members.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. So Alderman DePoy, you are moving to recommend to the Board of Aldermen that the buyout forgivable loan made to VNA be forgiven at this time per the city's policy.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, up next, Barbara Spalding, RRA, request for referral, Committee and Economic Development Committee, page 12 of your packets.
A motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
A motion to refer this issue to the Community Economic Development Committee for discussion.
All right, we have a motion to refer to Community Economic Development Committee. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, or questions on this issue? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Barb.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we have Treasurer Markowski, Treasurer's Report, July 21. This was emailed. Treasurer Markowski.
Hi, everyone. July is probably one of the busiest months in the treasurer's office, just wrapping up year end, preparing for tax rate, and then getting bills ready to go out. We mailed 6,646 tax bills, property tax, personal property tax, so it's been pretty busy in the office. So I present the July financials, but I like you to know that they're subject to change because there's still going to be some year end entries that will flow through, but I like to present them. We reconcile everything at the end of every month and provide those to you, but some of those year end entries may impact those numbers. At the end of the year, we, well, end of July, we're showing unassigned fund balance about 2.3 million. It's really on target with what we were anticipating when we set the tax rate. A little high right now, but I think a couple of adjustments are gonna knock that to about 2.1 for the year, so. Pooled cash balance is low right now, 2 million. We're really, we haven't started the tax collection at this point, so that's not unusual. But I would point out parking fund right now with a $6,000 positive cash balance. End of August, we're gonna be at a deficit. We're gonna run that fund at a deficit, so. Kind of been watching it. COVID really hit us and expenses are really over revenue receipts right now, so. Something to watch. Also, the sewer fund has a significant balance due to the city. I believe that we had a lot of losses there. Water sewer funds really took some hits during COVID, and the sewer fund is really supporting the projects that, so that's where you're seeing that cash deficit there. Delinquent accounts, I kind of looked back last year, July, were actually better, 252,000, so that's a nice comparison. We're knocking those delinquencies down a bit, so. Through tax sale and collection, so that's a positive. We have entered into a number of payment agreements with folks. We want to try to avoid tax sale if we can, so we're trying to get people and develop some relationships, get some some payment agreements going. And that's also for water and sewer. And I would mention that the state has a program right now for emergency assistance to landlords, renters, for utility payments that could help rent utilities. So if anyone has questions, contact the office and we'll give you the links for that. We have a number of, not a great number of people applying, but I could see that maybe we're not getting the word out enough. If we speak with people that are having issues, we encourage them to apply, so if you know anyone that's having some trouble. We have five tax sales up for redemption this week, so I believe that we'll have a few city-owned properties by the end of the week. And good news, which I'm happy to share, is we've completed the refinance of the water and sewer meter project. We went from 3.79% to 2.39%, so that's a big savings of 16,000 a year. It's gonna be 190,000 over 12 years, so. Good one. And thank you to the city attorney. That was a lot of work on his part, just going through the documents, so. That was a good thing that we were able to wrap up in July, and we will open a new special revenue fund for the ARPA funds that we received, so we'll be accounting separately, so. So I would be looking really for some guidelines, spending guidelines. What's the oversight gonna look like? How we'll determine which projects. And I don't know if that's in finance, it's in finance.
Probably is in the finance community.
Yeah.
Just kind of a folding place, but we thought we'd put it there until we found out what the funds were and what the controls were and we just had a spot to meet with the mayor and whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, can I suggest we wait till the final rolling comes out?
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which I heard the other day, it could be October.
And I think they're-
October for the final first report due?
So absolutely, and I think the mayor is still receiving requests, so to speak, I guess I'll say, so it'd be fair to kind of put them all on the table and the ones that we're unable to deal with because of whatever those restrictions are will come off the table and then we'll definitely be down to whatever we need to debate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we have Attorney Blumer, contract with State of Vermont Aircraft Rescue and Fire Fighting Services, pages 13 through 27 of your packet. Attorney Blumer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with the caveat that I think we could potentially handle this in open session, but if there are questions or you'd like me to go back to the state, then it may be that we we should put it into executive session, but for now, I did provide you with the the latest draft that had been negotiated with the state. I'm actually gonna ask Chief Lovett if he could just quickly give you an overview. I tried to do so in my email, but I think he can kind of describe to you the the type of services that are covered by the contract. I can fill in if there's any anything that that I remember that he's left out, but he knows it, he knows it really well. He's actually a member of the of the ARF team, and so I'll turn it over to you, Chief Lovett, for a couple minutes of overview, and then I can talk about what's changed in in this version of the contract.
Yeah, for about a little over 20 years, the city of Rutland has provided fire protection for the airport under certain circumstances. Typically, in a small aircraft going to the airport, it's not required to have firefighting protection there, but there is a limit to when the aircraft exceeds a certain weight in passenger complement that they have to have certified with the FAA firefighters on standby. We have currently five on the team. I'm still certified. What we do is in a situation where if they know an aircraft's coming into Rutland, they call us and say, can you provide service for us? And then we dispatch two people to be there prior to the landing and throughout the passengers' disembarking and the plane leaving. The second type of this contract is if they were to have an aircraft flying into Rutland and declares an in-flight emergency, at which time the state police would dispatch us and Clarendon Fire Department because the airport sits in Clarendon, and together both departments respond to cover the incident at the airport. As we've worked through this process, you know, City Attorney is a very patient man and he's been working really hard on this, but, you know, we've come to the realization that there are other services we can provide for the airport, help keep the airport, you know, afloat and ease their burden. And one of them is to maintain and oversee the truck. Now, we go down on a weekly basis and check the airport, make sure everything's good. It's also familiarization for us, but the truck is very specialized. It needs to be checked quite frequently. One thing we're exploring in this new contractor, actually, you know, joining in on, is the maintenance of the vehicle. We identify a problem, we see that it's fixed. That gives us some control because often we we're not sure exactly how it was being maintained. If we're maintaining it, we're responsible for it, we can follow the legislation and the mandates and make sure it's done. And so that gives us a degree of comfort knowing the truck is ready when we need it. And a lot of it is just kind of hammering out the process. When we first got into the contract, it was, this is a self-funded, cost taxpayers nothing type of a contract, and that's what we've continued with.
Alderman Dungus?
How many hours a year do you spend at the airport? On average, does the fire-
Well, each week, it's about two hours for an inspection, so one member of the, you know, the team of five goes down and checks it, so it's two hours a week. And then the training, training is about 16 hours of active classroom, and then we have a large fire normally either in Logan Airport or Manchester, Manhattan Fire Academy. And it's a certification burn where they have a simulator. So it's, it varies depending on the year and the new mandates because a lot of times the FAA issues a new thing or they discover a problem with an aircraft. We may find ourselves back in the classroom, you know, extra hours.
Does that also include the time for the larger aircraft to come in, in that list?
As far as if-
Is that staffing today?
Yes, there is also a provision in the contract that covers us.
Yeah, historically, how much time?
The last, though, we've had about six times where we've had to go down. Yep. Some of them are charters, some charter companies, because they're flying in with an aircraft valued at about $80 million, they want a crew on standby, and that's happened about three times in the last five years.
Okay. So that sounds like it's about 140 to 160 hours a year on average? Okay, thank you.
So I can just quickly give you a little backdrop on the the new the new agreement. So there wasn't, there's an existing agreement, actually, that's been extended for several three-month periods. Chief Lovett and Deputy Chief Mangan had gone through that particular agreement and identified some areas in the, what I'll call sort of the operational portions of the contract where there was some ambiguity or we weren't doing things, you know, didn't reflect necessarily what what the work actually looked like on the ground. So we made quite a bit of change to, you know, just the process of how how the city is called out, you know, what, how we would need to respond. So they they did a great job, you know, coming up with those things and putting those in. I looked at it a little bit more closely from the legal end as far as what are our options to terminate the agreement if, for whatever reason, it's it's not feasible for us or it's not working out. And then the state, as I mentioned in my email, the state is accustomed to everybody agreeing to their, it's a good thing Josh isn't here because he might take, might take offense to this, but they generally have the leverage over everybody that to get them to sign their standard terms and conditions, which you'll see our attachment C of the of this particular attachment. And a handful of those have been overridden in attachment D to our benefit so that we we're no longer required to indemnify the state, whereas in the previous contract we were, and that's what they were looking for us to do here. We've also been able to limit our liability that we do still have to the proceeds of our insurance, so that doesn't, won't leave us bare if there's a large claim that the insurance wouldn't cover. So that's, it's taken over a year to get to this point. Some of it is just getting caught up, you know, COVID delayed a few things probably on our side. They've got a fair amount of red tape that they have to get through on their side, so. But there there has been a lot of back and forth about the indemnification and the insurance provisions. So I'm happy to say that that they've moved well towards our our position on on those two things. The one thing that does remain up in the air, we were talking about it Friday, and then I assumed that we would talk about it again today, but I forgot, or I don't know that I ever knew that today was Bennington, Battle Bennington Day or Bennington Battle Day. So no one at the state was probably looking at this today. So there's one portion that's sort of left hanging out there that if you're willing, I would say it would make sense to authorize the mayor to make the final decision about the sort of the form of that particular payment. And that's, we're trying to figure out the best way for the state to compensate us for the insurance policy that we're putting at risk. They'd like to have some coverage, and we're willing to do that, but we we'd like to sort of be compensated for the the risk that there may be a claim and that will affect future premiums. So as as Chief Lovett alluded to, the way that this is structured is that he does, I don't know if it's a quarterly bill or a monthly bill, monthly bill, and it's really based on if there are people that are on duty that are doing work under the contract, the the airport and the state isn't billed at all because there wasn't, wasn't an additional cost to the to the city. Now, if someone that's on duty, who's on the ARF team, has to go out to the airport for something, and we need to call someone in to backfill at the at the city, then the state would actually be billed for the person coming in to backfill. So it's set up that it's supposed to be kind of a net zero where the city is only billing for the additional costs that it has that are triggered by the contract. But what that doesn't do, you know, like a for-profit business would build in something for the the risk that we're taking on with providing the services. It's a fairly, you know, dangerous service to be fighting fires and, you know, both for our our folks and for the people that we're trying to help. So that's the last piece that we're trying to figure out the best way to, you know, either charge that as part of the hourly that we bill back to them or as a fixed fixed amount. So my suggestion would be if you're comfortable with everything, I can give you the the language, but to allow the mayor to kind of make the last executive decision about what what form that that payment may comes in. So beyond that, I don't know if people had a chance to look at it or if you saw my email of just after noon today, but those are the, that should give you at least enough information to ask questions or make a motion, I think.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And I'll take the language from the city attorney.
Give you a motion here. So the motion would be to authorize the fire chief to sign the contract with the State of Vermont for Aircraft Rescue and Fire Fighting Services in substantially the form presented and allowing the mayor to approve final form of the compensation for the city's insurance risk.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any questions, discussion, debate? Hearing and seeing none. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Attorney Blumer.
Thank you.
All right, Attorney Blumer's executive sessions will move to the end, and if the board does not object, I will jump to petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications to allow for the Habitat guys to present and then get out of here if they would like. So this is page 29 of your packet. And this is a waiver request for water and sewer allocation.
Thank you.
Come on up, Eric.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, thank you. So I'm here to represent the Habitat for Humanity. I'm the chair. And just a quick reminder, I mean, we have had a little bit of a slowdown during COVID, so we haven't been able to build this past year, but recently, through a lot of work and a cutting up of the Hickory Street properties, they were, Kevin Lozo was able to deed us a lot that we're subdividing, and we're gonna build three homes, hopefully, pretty soon, once we get through all of the permitting processes, which is, which is with this property become a little bit more arduous than most. So become a little bit more arduous than most. So we've been able to build three homes in Rutland City, and one in Fairhaven. And so we, besides COVID, we've been on track for one a year. We do raise all of our money through volunteer donations, and we do get one grant from the Vermont Housing Conservation Board, which has been very helpful. But we are here to ask for a waiver for the sewer and water allocation fee for the three properties. We were able, with Jeff Gwem, Jeff Wendberg, sorry, retired engineer, he spoke on our behalf for the Crescent Street home that we did two years ago. And you were gracious enough to do that at that time. So every bit helps with us being able to build homes for people of low income. And they do receive a no-interest loan that carries through. And even if they were to have to move and sell, it stays in perpetuity as a low-income home. So somebody who purchases that home down the road would have to also qualify as a low-income recipient. So we're trying to, you know, do the governor's bidding and continue. And it looks like our next three homes will be in Rutland City, if we can keep going in that respect.
And I'll just really add quickly, from my perspective, this is a hand-up, not a hand-out. This is hands-on. The eventual homeowners get their hands dirty. They go in there and they are part of the process. That home, the most recent one on Crescent Street, if you see it, it's beautiful. It came out gorgeous, as far as I'm concerned, because from the outside, having it in since it's been finished. But it was about halfway done. It was really an addition, a good addition to the community. So these, these folks do great work.
The motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And then I'll make a motion to waive the water and sewer allocation fees in connection with the Habitat for Humanity property at Hickory Street.
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate? Alderman DePoy?
So this is for the, you're, you're asking us to waive the connection fee and the water and sewer usage, or no? Just the connection fee at this?
It's a one-time fee.
Yeah, right. Okay. So it would still be metered, and when the new owners come in, they're responsible for paying their water and sewer at that point?
And actually, us being like the mortgagee, sorry, mortgage war, we make sure that those, the taxes are paid, and we collect an escrow from, from those homeowners. So, and there's home education, home buyer education that goes along with our program. So.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Any other questions?
I haven't.
Alderman Davis?
And what sized homes are we building? How many bedrooms or that type of thing?
Well, so depends on the applicants. So we try to tailor them. The last number of homes have been three-bedroom, because they, the recipients have had families, so that's been helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Coleman. I worked in the house at Crescent Street. I didn't have the opportunity to do it. I was very small. I had a brother-in-law. He was a first-year student. In fact, he was family of seven. He said, "Help us, join us, become our friends." Other people who have, and hopefully, this was my first one, came down to help. It's an incredible community effort. And if you can help, as Eric has asked, I get it back many, many times in return. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Dungus?
Question, can we amend this to waive the next three fees as well? Because they're talking about building this property and then three more, rather than having the, and then come back in? I think that would be beneficial.
I think we did. I think it was for all three, right?
I think they were asking for one at the moment, but I don't know the process well enough, because it is generally the DPW that I think deals with it directly. So I don't know if there needs to be a particular project in the offing, or whether you can apply, just if you have a parcel. I guess you could, you could make the motion contingent on it being possible, and then if it's not.
So, Michael, this?
I assumed it was for the property Hickory Street, which you're going to subdivide, right?
Right. So this is for, this would encompass all three.
Okay, that's right. Never mind. As long as we know that, that's no problem.
Withdraw my request for question of amendment.
Alderman Gillum?
I just got a comment. All the folks who are in those homes that have been built so far, the owners are still in those homes, and they are now taxpayers and good citizens working. So this is a good project for us. It's got people who are part of the community now, and working in the community, and paying taxes like the rest of us. So these are good projects.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Any other questions, comments? If not, we have a motion. It's been seconded for a waiver of the water and sewer allocation fees in connections with the property at Hickory Street. It does include the three properties that are being proposed. Would all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Speaking of water, is it okay if I?
Oh, yeah.
No, you need to sit there and stay parched.
While you walk for that water, I'll just read aloud the outcome of the vote. We, so for Building Inspector Mark Satakirske, that is nine in favor, zero no, two absent. So I know he's not here, but congratulations, Mark. You are our new building inspector. All right. So this brings us now to reports of standing committees. Up first, we have Alderman Davis, Finance Committee, Quarterly Report, LAS Budget. It was emailed, but I believe it was also printed and placed on your desks.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met August 12th. Members present were Chair Davis. Others present were Alderman Neary, Treasurer Markowski, Assistant Treasurer Holmquist, and from LAS, John Santinello and Ray Lamoria. The topics were the Treasurer's report for year-end of fiscal year June 30th, and the LAS budget. This will be a minority report due to the lack of quorum. I'm going to repeat some of the stuff that Treasurer Markowski just stated, so I apologize. Treasurer Markowski stated that we had a very good budget year due to the budget savings of over seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. The revenue was also greater than budgeted, as rooms and meals was greater than thought, and clerk fees were also up. Sales of city-owned properties, DPW savings were some of the examples. As stated, water and sewer budgets were down below targeted, and the question is, what was the impact of COVID with restaurants, et cetera, not being open? Deligrite property tax sales were up in the last fiscal years, and this is just for information only. Then we moved on to the LAS budget for fiscal year 2022. John presented the budget for the parking garage, which is fairly level-funded from last year. There is revenue loss due to COVID, as the restaurants and Paramounts were not open. There were losses parkers from downtown workers and downtown contracts. The shortfall for fiscal year 2022 is fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. There are existing contracts with the State of Vermont, DEW, and CCV. FY '21, the loss was seventeen thousand, three hundred and eleven, of which fifteen thousand dollars per our contract will be billed to the State of Vermont. John was also spoke of the savings he was able to secure with a newly negotiated Garage Keeper Insurance. He also spoke about new equipment for a pay station solutions that was acquired at no cost to the city, which will improve the use of the transit center. It'll be barcodes that can be used on your phone, Apple Pay, credit cards, et cetera, to help gain interest and improve traffic flow. The motion is to approve the budget, but first, because it is minority, I need to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
So my motion will be to approve the LAS budget as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. It's been seconded to approve the LAS budget as presented. Is there any discussion, debate, or questions on the issue? Alderman Neary?
I want to say, I was really encouraged from John's description of what the new meters or pay stations capacity will be. It's highly customizable. It's in the 21st century. And he also spoke of really trying to encourage some partnerships and expanding marketing with these new kiosks by partnering with Downtown Partnership. So I, I think we should certainly encourage Nikki and Brennan to reach out to him and try to establish that relationship moving forward.
Any other questions, comments?
Seconded.
Who seconded that? I missed it. All right. Hearing and seeing none. We have a motion. It has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, Alderman Davis.
Thank you.
We are on to Alderman Talbot, Community and Economic Development Committee. This was emailed.
Yep. The Community and Economic Development Committee met on August 5th, 2021. Members present were myself, Alderman Davis, Alderman Dungus, and Alderman Neary. Others present are Alderman Whitcomb, Alderman Franco, Dominic Cloud, Stephanie Clark, Brennan Duffy, Dave Cooper, Andrew Stanista, Lyle Jepson, Ed Bove, Tyler Richardson, Chris Atori, and Gordon DeTrillo. The meeting convened at 5:32 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to begin discussing the creation of a TIF, or Tax Increment Financing District, in Rutland City. Stephanie Clark from consulting firm Whitenburg joined the meeting to share an overview of TIF and how it works in Vermont. Clark has helped to set up six TIF districts in Vermont. TIF is an economic development tool whereby a municipality makes investments into public infrastructure that reduce barriers to new development, growing the grand list. The incremental taxes from these new development projects, made possible by the city's investments, go to pay down debt on that infrastructure by retaining a portion of what would otherwise go to state education fund. These are new taxes that would not otherwise occur without the investment the city has made into the infrastructure. The authorizing agency for TIF districts is the Vermont Economic Project Council, or VEPSC. A municipality with a TIF district has ten years to incur debt and build infrastructure projects. From the time of the first debt, the municipality has twenty years to retain the increment and pay down debt service. Clark suggests setting up a working group to draft a TIF district plan. A district boundary should be determined, typically within the designated downtown. The plan, created in year zero, looks out on ten years of infrastructure projects and private development that would happen as a result of the creation of the TIF district. Through talking to local stakeholders, identifying private development opportunities, and underdeveloped properties with potential, identifying the infrastructure barriers, the working group creates projections that include cost estimates for infrastructure, future assessed value for developments, and financing terms. In the development of a plan, certain project criteria must be met, including affordable housing, transportation, brownfields, and job creation. The plan must show that the municipality needs the TIF district tool to make these projects happen, as well as demonstrating the viability of the proposed projects. Once a TIF district plan is drafted, it is sent to the Board of Alderman for approval, and then an application is made to VEPSC for approval. Dominic Cloud, St. Albans city manager, spoke to their success in establishing and leveraging a TIF district. He described tax increment financing as the most effective economic development tool for downtown revitalization. He described in detail a number of instances in which the city was able to redevelop vacant and blighted properties in their downtown, to retain employers considering relocating outside the city, to attract new developments and employers, and to create new housing. In ten years, St. Albans used their TIF district to add seventy-five million dollars to their grand list. Alderman Davis asked if a TIF district could be outside downtown. Stephanie indicated that at least part of the district would likely need to be in downtown to receive approval from VEPSC. Davis followed up, asking for clarification about the public benefit for a development project. Dominic explained that something as fundamental as brownfield cleanup is considered a public benefit. Alderman Neary asked how a TIF district can be leveraged for downtown street scape improvements. Dominic explained that the need to address aging infrastructure under the street opens up space for a conversation about what you'll install at surface level after those improvements are made. Alderman Dungus asked how Rutland might be competing against other communities in the region for a TIF district. Stephanie explained that there are four remaining TIF districts allowed under the current legislation, with a limit of two districts per county. She also disclosed that Whitenburg is currently working with Killington to develop an application. Alderman Talbot concluded the meeting by agreeing to begin organizing the TIF working group, and the meeting adjourned at 6:30 PM. Alderman Talbot puts forth the following names for a TIF working group seeking approval of the full board. Michael Talbot, Bill Gillum, Brennan Duffy, Andy Paluch, Andrew Stanista, Ed Bove, Nikki Hinman, and Lyle Jepson.
Is that a motion?
Attorney Blumer, just, first time for me addressing this. Alderman Talbot put forth a working group. Is that something the full board should vote on to consider? Is it something, under my purview?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's actually necessary for the full board to approve it, although I think it may make sense, and this may be why Alderman Talbot is putting it forward, that whatever's coming out of this group, I think will be presented to the board. And so if the board is not happy with the makeup of that group, then it might, you know, might make sense to get the blessing at least of the board. But I don't think there's, if Alderman Talbot did want to get this group together, I don't think he necessarily needs the board's blessing, but I think it's a good idea to seek it.
Alderman Davis?
No, I was just going to say, because I think it could be established by the chair.
Yeah.
Well, I think this is not necessarily going to be a group that has, because, because he's, there's only two members, so there's no quorum. It's, it's not necessarily a sub-body of this board. It's two members joining with folks from other, other places. So, you know, again, I, I think that they would, they would be, if they just wanted to get together for coffee with this group and discuss, there's no open meeting laws that, that would be triggered. And it's really just that, if the hope is that this group will come up with something to bring to the board for their consideration, that the board be comfortable with, with who Alderman Talbot is proposing to include.
Alderman Neary?
I think this is great. I like this list. I'm just going to throw out a plug to encourage we do this as quickly as possible. I know there's two per county, but there's only four left, and Killington's got quite a bit of a head start. We are a much better applicant, no doubt. We can do a lot more with this. So I just encourage that. If we are serious about it, which I hope we are, we move as quickly as we can, while still doing our due diligence.
Thank you, Alderman Neary. Alderman Gillum?
I think it's very important. I agree with Alderman Neary that we need to get going here, because the clock is ticking. We need to get the grand list up. We all know that problem. So this is the time to get started. I have a project here coming in. I'm going to refer to a committee, which deals with the TIF. I already talked to the chairman of the committee, that we've talked to Greg Cox on the project over there. This is going to slide right into that program. So I think we got to get going. This opportunity here, let's do it now.
Very good. Thank you. Any further comments, discussion on this issue?
Do I need to modify these minutes, since I'm not seeking the official or formal approval of the board? I think it's fine to say that you're seeking the approval of the board, whether it was necessary or not, you know.
Any further action we need to take here, Attorney Blumer, or is?
I mean, I think Alderman Talbot still would like a, whatever form it is in, a blessing that these are eight, eight folks that the, that the board has faith, can do this, do this work and bring it, bring it back to the board.
How might we phrase that motion, Attorney Blumer?
I think it's fine to just approve the list, you know, not get, not overdo it, just, just as it's been presented.
Make a motion to approve the list as it's been presented.
Thank you. So we have a motion, and it has been seconded to approve the list as presented. Is there any further discussion, debate, or questions?
All right, so we're going to start debating each individual name.
The point, the point of this is, we can't, the committee can't do anything on its own. It has to come back to this board. It's got to go through the committee process. We got to work with, with the redevelopment authority, because there's some issues over there. So this, this is going to work through the system.
And if I may?
Yes.
I think what I'd like to see come back before this board as well is the projects. I think that's where the debate occurs, is whether we agree or disagree that this is the project that we want to.
Correct. And that's also part of the formation of a plan. Correct. And that's also part of the formation of a plan, you know what I mean? It has to be, the plan has to be approved by the board as well, so that will happen again in that catch.
So the working group can't really do much until we have a consultant who really knows how to navigate this process. So the board will be hearing about it hopefully by next meeting. You know, the mayor agrees to talk about a request for a quote, so we can get the ball rolling on that to see if there's will to hire a consultant, so that we can actually do this. Because you can only get the TIF application approved if you work with a consultant. And then we would develop the projects during the development of the application, so the board would get to see them all.
Very good. All right, so if a motion has been seconded for this board to vote to show its support for this working group, would all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, Alderman Talbot.
I just want the record, I didn't vote for that, because my name was on the list. I think I had a conflict.
For the record, Bill Gillum abstained for voting.
Are you economically benefiting from being on this list?
Very good. Well, I believe.
I think the public should know that.
Absolutely. But it appears we have given the blessing to this working group. Thank you, guys. Really appreciate that. Up next, we have reports of select committees. Alderman Clifford, Intermunicipal Committee, page 28 of your package.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Intermunicipal Committee met August 9th at 6:30 in the conference room at City Hall to discuss pedestrian safety issues on Route 7 in Rutland Town and Rutland City. Members present in the town side, on the town side were Selectman John Paul Fagnant and Select Board Chair Mary Ashcroft. On the city side were myself, Alderman Gillum, and Alderman Davis. Others present were Board President Whitcomb and Gordon from the Rutland Herald. Chairwoman Ashcroft presented the committee with the Vermont State Police Report pertaining to the two recent incidents regarding pedestrian deaths on Route 7. While it was noted that the incidents were not caused by any traffic control issues, the committee agreed that some improvements could possibly prevent any further accidents along that corridor. After some short discussion among members regarding speed and pedestrian crossing issues, a motion was made by Alderman Davis to have the city attorney draft a resolution to be signed by both the Rutland Board of Aldermen and the Rutland Town Select Board to be sent to the Vermont Agency of Transportation requesting that the speed be reduced to 35 miles per hour between Post Road to the Green Mountain Plaza entrance in Rutland Town, and that any suggestions that the agency can help with regarding crosswalk issues and the timing of traffic lights would be welcome. And I'd like to also add to this, to, to send this resolution to our city and town delegation as well.
Thank you, Alderman Clifford.
I'll second. That's a motion. I'll second.
So we have a motion that's been seconded. Alderman Depoy?
I, I have work that I do down on South Main a lot. I'm down that way, as a lot of us are down that way anyways, for different reasons. And I see a truck pulling in to the Dollar General, and I think the truck is probably delivering to the Dollar General. Okay? It's facing northbound, pulling in. I'm coming from McDonald's, going south on South Main, and I see a guy walking across the street. Goes behind the, the truck's in like the suicide lane in the middle, goes behind the truck, and there's cars in, doing, they weren't speeding 35 miles an hour. There's no way that these people were going to see this guy if he stepped out from behind the truck that was pulling into Dollar General. And I'm thinking to myself, the mayor said, luckily, you know, thank God for the city, that this stuff didn't happen in the city, but it could have, those pedestrian deaths, okay? Well, I'm like, my God, he spoke too soon. This guy's going to go. And I, I crept up to him and I said, you need to be safer than, you know, than that. And I basically got Merry Christmas from him.
That was nice.
I don't know the details of what, the pedestrian deaths were down on South Main, south of that. But there seems to be a denial or an arrogance or something of some of these pedestrians that are crossing a route that cars, yeah, the speed limit is 35, but potentially doing 45, 50 sometimes. And say they're doing 35. A motorist is not going to see somebody that steps, and this guy couldn't have been five feet from the back end of the truck, going east to west toward the gun shop or toward the, you know, the sound audio place, you know, it's going over there somewhere, I don't know. And, I mean, that's how this stuff happens. And how do you legislate, you know, brains to not do something like, you can't. So we can change all the speed limits that we want. We can change all of the signage and all of the streetlights and traffic lights that we want, but if people aren't crossing, where government has funded a crosswalk with lights and ways to be safer, I mean, granted, somebody could run a red light and there could still be a pedestrian, but at least a pedestrian is doing it the way that we've determined to be the safest route for them. But when you have somebody that just can't walk literally 100 yards up, take a crosswalk, and 100 yards back, then how are you, how are we going to legis, you can't legislate that. You can't make a law or change anything that's going to change that behavior. People, my point is, is people are going to have to start acting in a more responsible manner, because it's not just their lives that they're affecting in these two cases by death. It was the person that hit them. I know one of the people that hit one of the other people, you know, one of the pedestrian fatalities. And now this person's life is forever stigmatized in some manner about that traffic death, even though it wasn't that person's fault. They weren't speeding. They weren't blowing a red light or anything. So I have to wonder how, as we proceed in this, we can help pedestrian, people that are, I see people walking all the time, going both, both directions on, you know, on the sidewalk and, and doing it correctly. But then for some reason, they get it in their head, I got to get to the other side, and I don't want to walk down to there. I want to do it right here and get across the street. I don't know how we can legislate, educate, or anything a random pedestrian that's going to cross, and you're going, anytime you mix people walking in traffic, there's going to be problems. And I don't know of any case where a pickup truck loses to a pedestrian on Route 7. It doesn't, it's just a fact.
Thank you, Alderman Depoy. Alderman Clifford?
I agree 100% with Alderman Depoy. We did discuss, chime in if you, if you want to, those self-responsibility issues that Alderman Depoy has discussed. We thought that perhaps, you know, lowering the speed limit in between that and seeing if, if the, if the state had any other, you know, suggestions that they might add. I forget what Selectman Fagnant said was the distance between how, how far, how fast it takes to stop at 35 miles an hour, 60 some odd feet or something?
Yep.
So we're, we're aware of that. But again, we just felt that, you know, this could possibly help going down the road, so.
And I think, if I may, if I'm not interrupting anybody, I think, if I may, we discussed the fact that you can't fix stupid. It's there. But you can give the people who are in the cars an opportunity to stop if we slow them down a little bit. And we know that if it's posted 40, you're going 45, or maybe a little more.
Right.
We also know that you can start at the Green Mountain Plaza, and if you go a certain speed, you hit every green light till you get to Dunkin' Donuts by Strong's Avenue. You know, so you, you know, people, we know these kind of things. The problem is with the crosswalks is, and I'll just talk to the city, we have a crosswalk at Crescent Street and Route 7. There's not another one until you get to the Post Road.
Going north.
Right. So to say you can't walk 100 feet to a crossing really isn't true, because there isn't one in 100 feet. And understandably so, because they want to put them where a light is, because that's the safest place to cross a five-lane highway when you have the, the turning lane in the middle. So I think the state has to get creative. They certainly have to be aware that, of the fatalities that have occurred down there, even though the drivers have not been held responsible for them. And, you know, work with the municipalities just to see what can we do to make that road a safer road for people who are going to cross, regardless of a light or not, you know?
Thank you, Alderman Davis. Alderman Neary?
Yep. Okay. Yeah, so I completely agree with everything you guys said, completely. You know, I don't think we're going to, we have to mitigate the dumbest person in this situation. I'll just read a statistic for you. The average risk of death for, for a pedestrian reaches 25% at 32 miles an hour, 50% at 42 miles an hour, and 75% at 50 miles an hour. Now, I live on the one-way end of Killington Avenue. I cross Route 7 every day going to work to and from. I can tell you, people in the 35 mile an hour zone in the city are pushing 45, 50, easy.
Easy.
Now, will a speed limit change that? No. But at least it's something enforceable if we want to commit to traffic safety enforcement. If not, it's worthless. I will say, my only issue with this particular referral is, you know, I, I've dealt with Traffic Safety Committee two dozen times since working with the Planning Commission. I've gone to the hearings, I've testified. Only once out of the two dozen times I've been there have they reversed an engineering recommendation on a speed limit. And that was on Route 3 at the Corn Hill Corner, which is brutal in Pittsburgh. So that was more of a land use setting. I know for them, they always go by engineering standards and the science, and it's always the 85th percentile. And we'll know when they do a traffic study, the 85th percentile in that section of road is probably 45, 46 miles an hour. So we'll never warrant a speed limit change. Where we get around that is if, one, we do our part to sort of produce safety countermeasures, or we reduce the speed through other means, right? So they're never, or we change the land use. So for us, that's, I think part of the issue we're seeing is, we have this five-lane road. That part of town was never sort of as walked as it is now. And I think part of that is the sort of homelessness encampments and people at those motels and hotels through COVID. Because I, anecdotally, I don't remember that many people walking that far south as often as they do now. And they're crossing, and they're, they're definitely going to get hit. So yeah, I do think a mile per hour changes is necessary if we're trying to reduce the risk of death. And I will actually be talking about this in my Traffic Safety Committee referral, because I think the committee would like to see the city perform a traffic engineering study. Because the one VTранs is going to do for us is like an afternoon, it's a very limited sort of snapshot. We're going to have to dive much deeper than they're willing. They're not going to do this for us. Since it's Class 1, they're going to say, yeah, we control it, but it's really up to you. So I think we're going to have to be more active. I know, it's a catch 22, but I think they're not going to do anything for us. We're going to have to make it happen, so.
Thank you, Alderman Neary. Alderman Gillum, I'll be next.
The other discussion in the committee was the crosswalks. As Chair, Chair, Alderman Davis, Alderman Woman, excuse me, Davis, had talked about the calming on that end of the road on North End. There is hardly any crosswalks. We need, we talked about putting the flashing lights like we did for the bike pass, so you can cross, so the driver knows there's someone in the crosswalk. Those are some things we can do. Also, we can put the trailers out there with the speed limit on there. We haven't done that in a while. I think between Rutland Town and Rutland City, we can do that. So just remind people, oh, by the way, you're going a little too fast here. And that actually works at Killington, on, on the Killington Road. They have one there permanently. And by God, I'm, I am flying up, and I go, oh yeah, I am going a little bit too fast. So it does remind people that they need to slow down. And reducing the speed limit in the Rutland Town section on both ends calms it before it comes to the city limits. Because when they're 45 out in Rutland Town, they're still 45 until they get probably to McDonald's or, or Big Lots or Lot Store intersection, so. I think it's going to be a combination of things. It's not going to be one thing, but we need to bring it to the state's attention. And I think this is a good thing we need to do here.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Alderman Talbot?
Yeah, so two things. I agree with everything everybody said. I feel like the people, that I, I mean, I could put together a supercut from my dash cam of people crossing illegally on that section of Route 7. And I'm just conjecturing, I don't think they're stupid. I think it's nihilism. I think they feel disenfranchised, they're not engaged. They don't value their own life. They're not worried about their own safety. They're not thinking of others. So I think it's systemic problems to address this that are a lot bigger than necessarily pedestrian education. Now, when it comes to crosswalks, I don't feel safe in a lot of Rutland City crosswalks. I walk downtown every morning and cross West Street with my partner and my dog. And we press the button, we wait for it to say it's green to cross, and as we're crossing, drivers turning left from Wales onto West, just speed by us, just a few inches away. I've had the city bus several times, just be so impatient to turn, that they're just crowding us out of the crosswalk. Saturday, driving up by Art in the Park, saw a car zooming down the hill at like 40 miles an hour, not stop for a woman and a walker crossing and leaving Art in the Park. We got to get pedestrian flashers around the city to, to help make the crosswalks safer.
And if we may, we spoke about the length of the time, because you start to cross and it's counting down. And if you're elderly?
Sure.
The woman you're speaking of, all of a sudden, you got to hurry up. How do you do that? You know, and there are cars starting to move. So I, I think we're realistic, because I spoke with the secretary, Franny Duna's secretary today, who was looking at some of the AOT things, and she was saying that they could come down and they could do a, a traffic study, and they could choose to raise the, a limit instead of lower it. I think that'd be a little bit of a discussion and a ballot, or, you know, debate based on the fatalities that have occurred. But they also encourage signage. So maybe it's just a signage that says, you know, speed limit is enforced here. You know, people just have to maybe get that in their head, that, I don't know so much in the town, but at least in the city, there could be some enforcement.
Yeah.
Because I was saying, I, I'm, I leave my house, I'm, I'm at Route, on Route 7 at quarter of 6:00 in the morning. These people are flying. They're flying down Route 7, and it isn't 35 miles an hour.
There was some discussion too. We also felt that doing this together would be, you know, give more clout to the state, so have more impact, so that's.
I, I think that's huge, because it, there is no line, you know? No one knows where Rutland Town is, so, yeah.
Alderman Dungus?
I'm good. Alderman Neary presented my point.
Well, a last point I want to make is, you know, you bring up enforcement, and with our PD running at about 75% of what they're supposed to be at, it doesn't seem like enforcement of traffic laws is going to be a top priority for them, because they just don't have the manpower. So we have to, if, if, you know, you're going to go to lowering speed limits, you're going to have to encourage the, the PD to be down there and showing a presence. I, I rarely see them on South Main pulling radar or, you know, and, and maybe even some kind of a, you know, I mean, I, I hate to add more ordinances. I'm looking to reduce ordinances. But I mean, some kind of a jaywalking ordinance, you know? I mean, you legislate people so that they aren't crossing from Dollar General over to the fairgrounds or something like that, or from Vernon Street over to Seward's area, but I mean.
I think this is going to be like a shopping cart. These people aren't going to be able to pay it, you know what I mean?
So I mean, and then that, it boils down to enforcement on speed limits, then. If you want to reduce the speed limit, then you got, it's got to be enforced, otherwise people just aren't going to, it's not going to get through.
And if I may, Alderman Depoy, just because I believe Alderman Gillum raised this point. One of the reasons I think motivated this was in conjunction with the town to start slowing people down as they enter the town, which I do believe might allow us to involve the state police to help enforce, as well as the sheriffs. And, and now put the onus perhaps on Rutland City, which, you know, clearly does have a shortage.
They don't have this problem in Bridgewater.
They raised, they raised the speed limit.
They raised the speed limit.
Oh, they did to 35?
It's better than crawling.
Don't go 31, though.
If there's no further discussion, debate, or questions, we do have a motion, which is to have the city attorney draft a resolution that will be signed by both the Board of Aldermen and the Rutland Town Select Board, and as well be shared with our city and town delegation going forward. Would all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, everybody there. This brings us to reports of representatives. Alderman Neary, Traffic Safety Committee, and an update on the Center Street scoping study.
Cheers, thank you. Sure, thank you. So, perfect timing, I really just wanted to, one, touch base with the board and let you all know that Traffic Committee has been meeting monthly, we've dealt with a number of issues mostly relating to signage in the city, whether it's no parking or adjusting handicap zones, so we've dealt with several dozen through the last couple months. The minutes are posted, I won't go through all of them for you, but I think we've done a pretty good job so far. There was a request, two requests at the last meeting, request for a pedestrian crossing at the intersection of South Main and Strong's Ave., and a pedestrian crossing at South Main and Park Street. The DPW Commissioner, Chief of Police, and I discussed at length, those issues did not feel comfortable at all approving any sort of additional crossings, but felt strongly all three parties on the committee that we wanted to refer to either DPW Committee or whichever you feel the most appropriate, the need to look at a formal scoping study, an engineering study of Route 7 through the city, especially to look at those crossings more in depth, and then the potential for maybe roundabouts or enhanced intersections at our busiest. So, that was asked, they did ask of me to come to the board and request that to be sent to committee, so that's kind of the move right now.
Second, DPW.
So, we have a motion, it's been seconded. I'll just restate this to make sure I have it. This is to refer to Department of Public, DPW Committee, a scoping study of Route 7 that will look at the crossings within the city.
Traffic safety generally, so look at more than just pedestrian crossings, but that'll be a focus, yeah.
Very good. So, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate on this referral? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Neary.
All right. So, I just wanted also to give you guys an update on the Center Street scoping study. So, we did have our local concerns virtual meeting on Monday, August 9th. Unfortunately, those, that meeting conflicted with our intermunicipal meeting. Going forward, I'll be very diligent about making sure these meetings get on the city website, I think that was just an oversight. There will be several more public meetings before the end of this scoping study, including the next will be the alternatives. So, the consultant is gonna be generating three alternatives, and we'll look at those at length. From the local concerns meeting, we had maybe a little over a dozen folks show up from around downtown. There wasn't too much significant sort of substantial or conceptual input from folks. There was some opposition to seeing a pedestrian only by some of the businesses concerned about curbside parking, especially Phoenix Books. Overall, folks seemed to be pretty positive about the change, especially businesses, and really seemed to want to embrace a change but want more input. So, for the board's sake, those that didn't make the meeting but still wanna have some input on the local concerns, there is a survey that'll share around, and we will also have a tent at the Parade of Heroes at the end of this month, so. If there are any questions, happy to answer them, otherwise we're moving right through.
Very good. Thank you, Alderman Neary. Any, Alderwoman Davis.
So, did I understand that the majority of the businesses along Center Street were supportive of a pedestrian?
No, there was not a majority of any particular configuration.
Okay.
There were a couple of people spoke out against the pedestrian only, but otherwise there wasn't any consensus.
Really?
I think people really wanna see it conceptualized before weighing in, but they will, we're at our next sort of working group meeting, it sounds like the three options are gonna be a one-way, a two-way, and a pedestrian only that we'll be looking at.
So, if I may, so even if, like, we had talked the last time about the pedestrian not necessarily being permanent, but at least maybe summer, or certain weeks, if, for lack of a better something, which would kind of free up some of the business.
Sort of a hybrid.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's very much still on the table, and that's probably the most likely scenario, honestly. I don't think there was a lot of motivation to see it completely shut down right away.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for Alderman Neary? Hearing and seeing none, thank you very much. All right, we've already done petitions, letters, miscellaneous communication, there's nothing for the Board of Control Commissioners. That brings us to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move along to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman Gillum.
Thank you. I got a document here that I like to refer to community development from the Farmers' Food Center, concept of building a standalone project for the food center, then a multiple site dealing with Baxter Street, Cleveland Avenue, Brownfields area, the Lynda Lee factory site, to look into an agricultural industrial complex there, because it seems to be a lot of money coming down for that, and I'd like to refer this to community development if I could.
Second. We have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, questions on this?
Since we're talking about TIF, this could be something we can look at.
So, I know, in speaking with Mr. Cox, I know that they're looking for money from the city, but my question is, is, and that wasn't answered, who is the project manager? Do we have a project manager?
That's what this.
No. Do they have a project manager?
Not at this moment, no. They do have a project number, and they are trying to get a development contractor to come in and help them put this plan together. That's where they're at right now. And some of this money coming in from Washington is for that.
Yeah, I spoke with them, I have a few concerns.
I believe this is a, because I'm from that neighborhood, and I know how bad it is, and those properties have been a thorn in that neighborhood for some time. And I think this is an opportunity to address that. If they're willing to look at it within their project, I think as a city we should actually work with them and see what we can figure out. I mean, nothing ventured, nothing gained. And if we can flip those properties, especially the Brownfield areas, so they are developable, they can use them, for businesses to come in and build on them, I think it's a wonderful idea. It's a movement that we haven't seen in a while, in that area.
So, we have a motion, it's been seconded, to refer the Farmers Market and Food Center Development Project to Community Economic Development Committee. Is there any further discussion or debate on this? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Is there any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business coming before the board? Seeing none, I will hand it over to Attorney Blumer and call his attention to the time.
Everybody knew there were three coming, so I don't feel too bad.
That's right. You tell them.
So, the first one is motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding pending litigation to which the city is a party would clearly place the city at substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the city's strategy in such pending litigation, and will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
Salmo.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Attorney Blumer.
Motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the clerk, city attorney, treasurer, and mayor to discuss pending litigation as a lot under Title 1, Section 313a1e, and Title 1, Section 313a1f.
Salmo.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, we will briefly stand down. Clear the room.